Grangeville, a community service of the Edward R. Murrow College of-
I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, October 25th, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission and begin by introducing a new member, Victoria Seaver, who's been in our audience for many years and now she's at the table, so.
Welcome.
The crowd goes wild.
Yes.
Okay, after that, the first item is approval of the minutes from September 27th. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions?
Correction.
Okay.
Halfway through current city, current city park space does not meet the national standards for quantity of parkland, but commissioners thought it was important, says though.
Okay, I see, where is a public space, let's see, where are you exactly?
Halfway down the paragraph there.
On the right side.
By word commissioners.
Oh, thought, yeah, yeah, it's a typo, or spelling, yeah.
Ooh.
Any others? See, my, my brain just reads right through that.
Editing for a living, by the way.
Good catch.
I need editing.
Yeah, anybody else? Can I entertain a motion to accept?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I, I voted yes, even though I was absent.
Me too.
Okay, yeah, all right, so the next item is correspondence. Mike, are there any, any correspondence from staff?
Nothing from staff.
Nothing from staff, anybody else? Okay. Transportation Commission meeting report, Joel Hamilton.
Transportation meeting would ordinarily have met tomorrow from four to six in this room, however, that meeting is canceled. The next scheduled meeting is two weeks hence, I have not seen an agenda for that, and I'm going to be absent for both the P and Z and the transportation meeting, two weeks hence.
Okay, so, yeah, so we won't get an update on transportation for a while, it sounds like, okay. Okay, the next item is public comment, which is an opportunity for members of the public to come and speak their mind on matters not on our agenda or currently pending before Planning and Zoning Commission, and there's no one in the audience tonight, so I guess we'll move on to item five.
Not only Victoria's favorite.
I know, without Victoria, we don't have any.
Have an audience, right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's a major debate about whether she's gained notoriety or lost it.
Would you might like to make a public comment about that, Nelson?
All right, so we're rounding the corner here to the last couple of chapters of the comp plan, our second time through, so I'll just give you a quick overview of, you know, what we had done. I made some changes since we last met on these two chapters, not so much chapter seven, but chapter six, there were a few changes that, and some more information that the commission wanted, and I'll go over those. So, we started out with kind of the major employers and industries within Moscow, and we ended up updating this employment and income chart, formerly we had just university and medical sectors, it's been expanded to include pretty much all of our major sectors within, within the city, so we've got government, retail, combination, healthcare services, professional, scientific, and technology, and other industry. So, updated those, brighter colors, you know, it looks a little bit better in the document. We had this major employers chart or table, and I think one of the comments, last time we had eliminated Washington State University, just because they weren't an employer in Moscow, but they had such a great impact on Moscow, that we thought that we'd create maybe another table, which just talks about the major employers in the region, and of course, you've got Washington State and Schweizer Engineering to round out those tables, so just updating their, you know, employee numbers for Washington State, 5,194, and then Schweizer is looking at about 2,344 employees there. And then looking at updating the major employers in Moscow, of course, U of I is, is the top, we had a number. Idaho Department of Labor, I think, had given us some numbers, and we've been kind of going rounds with them, trying to figure out where those numbers come from, and they can't really give us a solid answer, and it sounds like that the numbers that they have are really for the total employees throughout the state. And so, and had contacted them and got current numbers from Moscow campus, and that's 1,997, so, and then we've been doing the same thing through the rest of these, you know, items that are listed on this chart, is going and contacting them directly, in lieu of going with Idaho Department of Labor numbers, which appear to be off for some reason. So, Gritman reported 380, the next biggest would be Walmart, 200, City of Moscow is 200, Leita County has gone down slightly, they're at 160 from when we previously reported that. Moscow School District, 140, EMSI has crept up there, they've been growing pretty steadily, so now they're up to 130 employees, and I think they expect to keep on increasing their, their employees. Good Samaritan, 110, Moscow Family Medicine was 90, and Moscow Food Co-op is 85. I think we're still waiting to hear back from Good Samaritan, so we may have one slight change there, but the rest of the numbers should be fairly solid.
Is there, would, do you think Moscow Building Supply is anywhere near the same as Moscow, as a co-op, or tri-state?
Well, that'd be another one. We had Moscow Building Supply, but those were both the stores, and Moscow and Pullman, I think they were at about 150 employees, but that was both stores, so just containing it to Moscow, you know, expecting that they're probably going to be maybe half of that, just at the Moscow location. They could make the list, we're just waiting to have that broken out, so.
So, there's no, it seems straightforward enough, but no thought about who, we don't know who lives where, as you think about, we, we, that's the next subtlety, I suppose, of the questions, how many Washington State people might live in Moscow, how many Idaho people might live in Pullman, and whether that, it may not have any relevance to, I think this is, is pay of jobs, I guess, in the city is what this does.
Yeah, and we, we had that comment, I think, from the commission last time, and Anne reached out, and we've got some numbers for, we updated it in the, in the text. So, WSU has reported that 730 of their employees live in Moscow.
Ah.
As of last year, so we do have those numbers. I think we had Schweitzer as well, but I don't know if I had listed.
627.
627, thanks.
Wow, so that's pretty significant, isn't it? We, I've never heard, I don't think I've heard those before, I haven't paid attention, maybe.
Steve Peterson, in his report to the GMA, had some numbers of the transfer every day, you may, they're in that report, and you may want to put that in here. I think it's two-thirds as many go that way as come this way. It, it's not specific to where they work, it's just the transfer of bodies on a daily basis, so if you've got his report, I think it's in there. If you don't, I've got it.
Okay.
One of the, if I may, Madam Chair, a question.
Yes.
Good Sam did not make the list before, and now they're on it, they haven't substantially increased their number of employees, have they?
You know, I, I don't know that information, I don't know if they have or not, I'm not that familiar with, with the operations there.
I see.
And they may change, we're, we're still waiting, you know, that was one, we had just gone off of IDL numbers with 110, and they've been off, so we're still waiting to hear back from, from their human resources after the count, and so that, that one may probably drop off the list and somebody else be added, maybe Moscow Building added to it, so.
Yes, Joel.
Would the second table there make more sense if we said other major employers in the region, since major employers in the region include all of the above?
Except those two are bigger than the other, anything else.
Other.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
No, you're right.
Anything else?
No, and I think, my brain is crossing from this to our shared reading, which had a lot of statistics that you're talking about, from Steve Peterson, and I was trying to remember which one went, came from which source, but.
So, you know, right after the major employers and industries, we go into quite a bit of detail about U of I and WSU, we, I think, cite or quote Steve Peterson's previous report that he did, not the, the current one, but the, the one previously, about the economic impact of students attending the University of Idaho, and the impact they give to our economy through, you know, residential living, purchasing, things of that nature. Enrollment, we just updated the enrollment numbers, both universities, and also updated the employees working at both, and we had this chart here that had WSU and U of I total enrollment, and it was just, we just needed to update that, so we thought we'd, you know, update it with a little bit better colors than a green and a yellow for the school colors, so we've got silver and more of a gold for U of I, so.
Oh, okay.
That was the best I could think of, you know.
I wondered what that color was.
Usually the maroon didn't fit in with the background and theme of the document, so I had to go with silver, but, anyway, yeah, just updating the enrollment numbers, as you can see, WSU's been, you know, increasing enrollment for the last five, six years, U of I's been kind of up and down, I think 2010 was when they maxed out on total enrollment, and then it's been declining ever since, except we did see a slight bump this last year in 2016.
You know what I think is going to help that, I think it was in the paper the other day, because I remember that 2010 sort of, the drop after that, and a lot of it was because of the policy change of not giving equivalent tuition to Washington and regional states, that brought in a lot of students, so then we lost those students, and now they're going back to, you know, that, for the academically, you know, well-qualified students, and I think that might help to pump it, but we'll see, yeah.
Mike, I heard tonight that the U of I numbers are out.
Are they?
I don't know what they are, but I heard they came out today.
Okay.
Maybe in the morning.
I heard they were going to be up.
You know, not that it's relevant to our particular chart, I just, I keep thinking about the Quad Cities, and, and I guess I, I just naively have, since being a child 50 years ago, always thinking that Lewiston and Clarkston, that Lewiston was a big place and we were a smaller place, and that's not true anymore, but one of the things that I noted in the paper was that LCSC seemed to have lost enrollment in the last years, which I found really, I guess, I was really troubled by, by that, I was, I would, somehow I felt like LCSC is a sort of people's college, I mean, our, our research universities are more haughty, and I thought, wow, they would really attract to people, and the newspaper reported they're down like four and a half percent or something, I was, and I don't know what that, I don't know what that means about our region.
Well, I wonder, I think it's, is it WUI that I'm thinking of? I just can't remember the acronym.
Western Undergraduate Exchange.
Yeah, yeah, but that would possibly impact them as well.
Impact them as well, yeah.
Mike, the daily news websites is, you have, I don't know whether you're dealing with U of I statewide or U of I Moscow, and I don't know about that in this, but it's top 12,000 up 2.4 percent, 12,072.
That's probably statewide.
That's statewide.
About 2.4, that's probably statewide.
It says 8910 here.
Wow, it's gone down.
For Moscow, so, yeah, we've gone down about.
Gone down again, huh?
I don't know, I don't know how they count the dual credit in there, the dual enrolled students or the high school students take college class, and there's another 1997 of those, so.
And those were in that, those were in last year's number.
They were, so then you've got.
It'll be the total of those.
11, something. Says it's only at 3.9 percent, that's, I can't remember.
Boy, so we're really starting to have to send the people in Washington a little thank you letter, I mean, as far as regional growth is concerned, it's all about Wazoo, isn't it?
Well, Schweitzer, too.
And Schweitzer, right, and, and Governor.
Well, it'd be interesting with the proposed budget cuts, seeing how this next couple, couple of years, and so, see what happens.
And I don't want to get ahead of, maybe it's in here, but will we talk, will you mention something about the airport? Is that going to be, is that gonna, is anything about the, our airport in, in this economic?
I don't know that we.
I'm not smart about, and Rob isn't here tonight, who's the smart guy about flight, but I keep presuming or that somehow we're edging toward better service or something with all the work that's going on out there, you wonder what, what that means.
Depends on whether demand increases with it, you know, if you have a bigger airplane coming in, you have fewer flights, if you don't have more.
And I don't know whether that's, whether, we talk about flights in Atlanta and San Francisco, but when you're just a little place, it can only have little, little tiny planes, the number of flights probably isn't as important maybe as the number of people that, I don't know.
Well, I think we talk about the Moscow-Pullman Airport in another chapter, but not necessarily the economic impact, but that's probably something good to include, you know, the runway realignment in some portion of the document, so I can look through to see where we have it, and then, you know, take a look at.
Well, I've said, I've said an untoward thing or two, because I don't fly out of the Moscow-Pullman Airport very often myself, and so I occasionally sit, and I've had some of my good friends in Moscow accost me for suggesting that it wasn't the most wonderful airport in, in the world, but as it grows, as things are happening out there, I'm just intrigued with what, what that means, whether that's a great assist, or whether it lags, whether the air thing just lags behind everything else, I don't know.
Peterson, in his last report, projected it to catch Pullman in five, I mean, Lewiston in five years in boardings.
That's what I'm, I'm edging toward, is thinking that as this, the Moscow-Pullman area has more people and more seeming energy, it's certainly, the airport's going to change too, you would, you would think, anyway, it's just a, it's just a note.
And then some of the other sectors, we just updated, so healthcare, obviously we've seen an increase in that sector, Gritman Building, the Medical Office Building, the South Jackson and Main Street intersection there was a big boon this last year, manufacturing, agriculture, retail, those sectors have all been updated, as well as construction industry. And then looking at other economic indicators, unemployment's been relatively low in the area, so we're at about 3.4 percent, which is, you know, below the national average. Underemployment, where you, you know, in cases where you have maybe a professional degree, but you're working a job that doesn't utilize that professional degree, is usually what underemployment means. We've seen some of these numbers change, Leita Benowa have gone up since 2006, Nez Perce actually gone down, Shoshone up, Clearwater has gone up, and the state of Idaho as a whole, 18.2 percent, so we're, we're below the state average, but a little bit higher than some of the adjacent areas.
I wonder how they determine that factor, I was, you know, it's a kind of a, some people just fell off the radar and retired.
Kind of a personal, yeah.
Yeah, during that period, and, you know, you just kind of wonder.
It could well be very erratic numbers.
Yeah, I, I would love to know how they gather that data.
It must, it must be related to people who go on unemployment and then, and then.
Eventually take a job.
At a certain date, that unemployment runs out, and that must be where the, where the note of some figure there, I would presume that.
Yeah, and if it's anything like the, the employment numbers we're getting, then it, you know, I don't know, I don't know how, how accurate it, it is. And then growing compatible target industries, industries that we want to retain, arts, entertainment, recreation, professional, scientific, and technical, that we saw 11 percent growth, you know, it still remains fairly small as far as the whole sector. Healthcare and social services, we've seen a pretty large uptick in that sector, so that's seen 24.1 percent growth. You know, healthcare is, is something that's going to continually to grow as baby boomers, you know, reach that age and need additional medical care, so that's, I think, only going to increase in upcoming years. And then just updating some of the terms, so LEDC has gone to PEP, which is the Partnership for Economic Prosperity, so just updating some of that information. And then implementation actions, so the goals, objectives section, we have this area listed as number four, this is really pointing to Legacy Crossing, we've done that as far as implementing zoning and encourage redevelopment between downtown and the university, so we struck that one from the list, and then this is, I think, referring to all the work that we've done with the relevant criteria and standards, updating the city's land development regulations to provide for greater predictability in land use decisions while enhancing community character, ensuring land use compatibility, so taking that one off the list as well. Chapter seven, implementation, this is already a fairly short section, we didn't really have a whole lot of changes suggested when we went over this before, it goes through kind of the implementation of the comprehensive plan, we had some obscure sections in land development regulations that talked about Idaho code and special use permits, and comp plan has to be tied to, you know, certain actions, and we already have done that, and we've updated it in our C S in our documents, so we just struck that section. The education portion, there's a lot of information about going around policymakers, department heads, elected officials, to give education about the comp plan and what it contains, and we talked about how, you know, the, when you do the initial comp plan, and it takes two, three years to get through the whole visioning and public outreach and adoption process, that I think everybody probably knows, you know, what, what's contained within the document, and so we had eliminated that section, and then changed the evaluation section at the very end to pretty much say what we're doing right now, you know, every five, six, seven years, go through and, and update the information. Previously, we had, you know, the direction for staff to prepare a report saying that, you know, everything that needed to be updated or changed, and instead of doing that, you know, we're just going to go through and, and update the document every five, six years. So, those are the major changes there, so that pretty much wraps up six and seven. I know Victoria had a number of Scrivners issues with the document, we'll go ahead and go through and make those changes, and.
Right, and the climate change, I mean, you did, were you able to go to the Sustainability Commission?
I did, yeah, and they're, they're, they're working on that, I think that comes up mainly in chap, you know, the earlier chapters, so.
Right.
I figure we've, you know, kind of gone all the way through the document twice, and I've been going around to the different commissions and soliciting input, and so as we get that, you know, filtered back to me, I figure we come back, I'll present it, and then we can go over, you know, their proposed assertions.
So, we're kind of looking at early next year as the completion of the update, you think?
Yeah, yeah.
Because we only have a few more meetings this year.
Yeah, we only have, you know, two, two more meetings since we canceled, the second one's in November and December, so, and they should be, you know, Sustainable Environment Commission, Victoria's on that as well, and I think that, I went and presented at the last meeting, and I don't know if they've had a.
They met yesterday.
Met, yeah, yeah, meeting yesterday, and I think they're still working on some of the language, so it probably won't be until November, December timeframe where we get the final recommendation, so, and I went to the Tree Commission as well, and so I've been making the rounds.
Okay.
So, we'll, those slowly filter in, but I did want to go back through and update you on what I've been doing with the Future Land Use and Growth Plan, as you recall, we were going through and eliminating that neighborhood conservation, which is the gray area, you know, which pretty much takes up maybe two-thirds of the city, and so I'm pretty much done with that, I'm still going through and, and kind of QA QC on some of these areas, just to make sure that, you know, there's no errors, and I think that some things are still going to change a little bit, I just completed it earlier this week, but I guess the major changes are, so we had, you know, previously civic institutional, and we talked about creation of the university zone, so I've taken this area out of the civic institutional and, and created the university zone, and that's kind of the darker shade of blue there. Gone around in a lot of the suburban areas, those are auto-urban residential designations, and then a lot of the areas that are residential, that are close to the city core, are more of the urban residential designation, and so I've made some of the changes there, some of the areas are a little bit subjective, so what I've done is, I've got maps for you, and I've got the portions of chapter two that talk about the different land use designations and give narrative descriptions about what they are. And then I've got, yeah, the new map and the old map, so you can take a look at that.
Oh, great.
Those are both new. New.
Did I get in front of Walter, or?
Uh-huh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I can.
He wants you.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, great. Oh, you don't have, you don't have a second one, I don't have a second one either, I thought starting to give it away. Okay, got it.
So, you know, what I thought, part of this is to have you go on in your own time and take a look, and I can print, you know, if we need like bigger maps to take a look at this, too, I can certainly print those in a larger version, but really the areas that are the toughest are the areas where it transitions from urban residential to auto-urban residential, and those areas are, you know, pretty much in this area. So, when you're going into some of the older neighborhoods to some of the newer neighborhoods, trying to think about what designation it should be, and there are some overlaps. trying to think about what designation it should be, and there are some overlaps. So looking at auto-urban residential, we'll just go through that. So it's generally anticipated to be low to moderate density residential uses. Three to seven units per acre. Could include a mix of single-family townhome, limited-scale multifamily residential. And then it discusses buffer yard requirements to ensure compatibility. Goes on to say manufactured home parks could be appropriately permitted in this district as additional use. Subject to review and application to specific well-articulated standards. And then it points you to zoning designations that are appropriate. And it says, you know, R1, which is low-density residential, R2, moderate density, and then medium-density R3, but it goes on to say in conjunction with planning and developments. Urban residential is the next step up for density in residential. Points to higher intensity development and then it still has some single-family neighborhoods to multifamily residential uses and the densities increase. So three to six units per acre is what we currently have for auto-urban residential. And then it goes up to five or four to fifteen units per acre in urban residential. And then it goes on to say that appropriate, areas appropriate for this designation include those located in close proximity to the city core. Areas of commercial development and areas adjacent or in close proximity to designated arterials. So you're thinking about those, you know, when you're going and looking at these areas. And then it goes on to say that this designation can also be utilized to create and reinforce urban, single-family neighborhoods with alleys and rear garage access, similar to near downtown neighborhoods. So, you know, looking at kind of the, the fabric of that core area, it's pretty easy to identify the areas that are more of the grid network and have alleys. You know, we see all the alleys in our, our maps. And so, you know, in, in those areas, if you look at Fort Russell neighborhood and areas south of six, you have this gradation of R4 to R3 to R2. But most of the time, if you go anywhere in like Fort Russell, you don't know that it's, there's an R2 zone or an R3 zone. You may see more larger buildings that are chopped up into apartments or duplexes. But for the most part, a lot, a lot of it has the same character and looks similar. So, you know, it doesn't necessarily follow a certain zone. It would, you know, point to maybe both of these land use designations. And then it goes on to say, a PUD built within the area of this designation should include a minimum of two housing types to achieve allowable, allowable higher density. And then it gives you an example that R3 and R4 zones are the most appropriate for this designation. So you do have some overlap. You know, we have R3 in auto-urban residential, we've got R3 in urban residential. And then you also have the rest of the paragraphs and the descriptions in order to try to sort out, you know, which, which areas feel like they're auto-urban or which feels, you know, which areas feel they're urban. So looking at a, you know, closer view, you can see that, you know, obviously we got Troy Highway here, Jefferson, Adams, Harrison, Logan, you know, pretty clear that these probably should be urban residential. You know, they, most of them have alleys that go through them, whether it's vertical or horizontal. You know, classic grid network. You get east of Logan starts to be a little more, you know, complicated. We do have an alley, you know, that goes up in certain areas of, of this section of town. And then, you know, still mainly a grid pattern, you know, pretty similar up to about Hayes Street. You kind of drop off the hill at Hayes Street there and it starts to go towards more single-level rancher-style homes at that location. And so, you know, that's why I cut it off at Hayes. Down here by Kenneth and Harold, you have a mixture of duplexes. It's, it's right now, it's a single-family zone, R2, but there are a number of duplexes. It, it used to be an R3 probably in the sixties or seventies and when those were constructed. And then sometime probably in the eighties, it was downzoned. And so it created a lot of knock informities for duplexes down in that area. You also have pretty close proximity to White, which is an arterial, and Blaine, which is a collector. You know, I think that portion of that points to that. But, you know, largely you're starting to get into more of this auto-urban residential area east of Hayes. And this is looking at, so the zoning configuration, you know, we go from a R4 to an R3 to an R2. And the cut is not necessarily on Lynn, it's, it's the properties, you know, so we've got similar properties on both sides of Lynn, but it's, they're really, the rear property lines is the division of the R2. So, you know, if you're just going off of strictly R4, R3 as urban residential, you might just run the line right here. But when you drive down any of these streets, really the character is so similar, it'd be hard to say that all of a sudden you're going from auto-urban to urban or vice versa on that line. So, you know, that's kind of what I was, we were grappling with on, on this one. And then I've got some examples. I did this illustrative guide to density about seven years ago now. It kind of gives examples of, you know, area, I think, took subdivision, some of Gregor's second. Kind of hard to see, but this is really, that's the animal clinic down here, this is Logan. It's kind of an L shape for the, for the subdivision. It was eighteen eighty-nine when that was platted, so pretty early subdivision. Kind of has a mixture of single-family, two-family, multifamily, and there's some commercial in there as well. We're looking at a six point six nine, you know, almost maybe seven net density there is what that is. So, you know, you look at how that fits in, you know, it's, it's over. Well, actually this says three to seven. We were thinking about dropping this down a little bit to six for auto-urban residential and then increasing urban residential to five, just looking at these areas and then just looking at, you know, what the density equates to. So, you know, this is kind of on the low end and it's, it's pretty close to the city core. And then looking at, so this is kind of same area just north of Sixth Street now, East City Park. You know, you can, you can see in, in Fort Russell area that, you know, you have that same pattern with grid network and then the, you know, rear access with the alleys. And you see it pretty much everywhere, all the way up to D Street. And then you see some, you know, a little bit east of Hayes, primarily, you know, in D Street, north of, of, north of D Street on, on Hayes and Lincoln as well, where you have that kind of carried on top of the hill. So I thought that, you know, at least Hayes in this area was more of a clear demarcation as to, you know, where that maybe should change. You start to see some of the single-level ranchers, you know, once you get into this first Garfield B Street neighborhood. And then looking at the zoning configuration, so we've got R4, we've got R3, and we've got R2 again. Almost really a larger swath of R2 in this area, you know, more so than that, that area south of Sixth Street down there. But then again, I mean, you think about, you know, the makeup of the neighborhood and you can't tell the difference even though you're in different zones. So that's why, you know, ended up, you know, carrying and to say that this isn't really more of an urban residential neighborhood, I, you know, I had a hard time not saying that it's, you know, not an urban residential neighborhood. I think it is, you know, it's, it's close, five, six blocks.
The blocks are much smaller.
They're much smaller.
They're shorter, yeah, and then they start to elongate when you get across Hayes.
You can see the big difference when you hit Hayes is that up till Hayes, we were committed to alleys. After Hayes, alleys disappeared.
Well, we went away from two-story houses and went to one-story houses and.
Committed to the automobile.
And the blocks are longer.
And of course, we don't see that on the map, but we gave up not only alleys, but we gave up sidewalks.
Yep.
And so the minute you cross Hayes, the cut texture of the, of the, of the city.
Well, it's a different development area. When was that platted for the most part, Mike, the yellow?
You know, I don't know. I, I have the information, I just don't have it with me. I know that.
Forty's, fifty's.
You know, the.
We, we could feel it with, in the Fort Russell. When we, as we got toward Hayes, there were more blocks that had ranch-style houses that we knew weren't going to fit into the Fort Russell.
Sidewalks went away immediately post-World War II over most of the country. I know it did where I was raised. Sidewalks were one block away from my house toward town. But I was in the post-World War II built it place.
Yeah, right. And it's, I, it's really, I find it really intriguing that you can read the history of urban development.
Well, then you leap over Mountain View and you really see the change.
And then, and then we, once we get up past Mountain View, we've started rediscovered sidewalks again. So you can almost just draw it out.
But the street patterns dramatically change.
See the history of urban development in the last hundred years. It's, it's, I, I don't think people aren't, aren't trained to see it, but it's, it's fun to do.
Yeah.
That's urban morphology.
Yeah.
There you go.
Well, it's pretty, you know, it's kind of neat because you can see it right here and just the street pattern and the parcel, you know, layout and everything. But, so that's why, you know, I, I kind of, you know, this area, it just felt right, you know, the transition point. You do have some of these areas that you, you start to get into, you know, more of a suburban. We've got a cul-de-sac here, but the majority of the development here is R3 or R4. You've got the Allesian apartments. You've got the Rayanne apartments over here. And so a lot of multifamily and, and a lot of R3 with duplexes. So, you know, that, that's why it was carried over, you know, so far into, into that area. That's Lena, right there. So, and then I just looked, I think this is Russell subdivision, Russell First Edition maybe. And just looking at the density there is eight point three two. So, you know, a lot, a lot of these neighborhoods that are primarily single-family but have a mixture, you know, we're, we're looking at somewhere between six and a half to eight and a half probably for the, the net density. Of course, when you start getting into apartments and, you know, townhouses, it jumps up. You know, our apartments, if you look at A and Baker, standard three-story apartment complex with surface parking, that usually tops out about twenty-four units per acre is what that is, so. And then looking a little bit further north of D Street. So this was, you know, we, we talked about this area a little bit, but you're still, you know, you have a little bit larger homes in, in some portions. But you have, I mean, it's kind of the same pattern that you, you have in, in all these older areas is that you have maybe larger homes on corner lots and then.
Well, it's kind of the top of the hill and then it falls off.
Smaller homes in between those. And you can see by, you know, kind of the, the lot sizes, the way that's happened. But, you know, at, once again, alley access there and, you know, just felt more of that urban context than you did suburban. So I had taken it up there and then, you know, these areas, Public Avenue, Lincoln, Vandal, you have a lot of R3 in there as well. I think that whole area might be zoned R3. It is. And, but it's much more of a, you know, suburban feel to it. And so we kept that as auto-urban residential extending through there. That's the streets, street shop there.
It's a pretty crazy, that F Street, all that F Street stuff in there is a wild deviation from anything that looks like normal.
Yeah, it is. I mean, you, you deal with a hill there as, as part of it.
Mike, you've got Good Samaritan Eisenhower as urban residential. Should not Good Sam Fairview be the same?
Probably. I mean, I think I was just going off of.
Because it's different, it's different from the neighborhood, Fairview is.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I was, initially I was just looking at zoning designation. So we've got R4 over there and I think that that's why, you know, we ended up. But actually, I think down here, I think it's still R2. Do you have multifamily as part of that as well or is it all just duplexes?
They've got an apartment building and then twenty twin homes. They don't have any nursing care or, or any of that. It's just the apartments and the twin homes at Fairview. So there is a, there is an apartment building with, I don't know, forty apartments maybe.
Interesting.
I just noticed the two were different.
Yeah. So, you know, thinking back to those two designations and how we've got, you know, maybe urban residential extending into portions that are R2 and, you know, looking at the description of, of what that entails, you know, and pointing to R3 or R4, you know, I don't think we are at risk with the neighborhoods that are already developed and have smaller lot sizes. But if you run into areas which may be primed for redevelopment and, you know, potentially going through a rezone, you know, the comp plan's going to guide a rezone. And I think that what the neighborhood conservation designation that we were getting rid of was trying to do was to preserve some of the, you know, the existing neighborhoods. And so, you know, I think that we want to include some type of description about preservation of the existing character of the neighborhood. And so at the very beginning, and this is in your packet that I gave you, there's a description about how the Future Land Use Map guides development and public improvements. Talks about how you utilize this and, and zoning decisions. Goes on to say in determination of whether specific zoning classification conforms to the land use designation of the map. Flexibility should be used to interpret land use designation boundaries, which are applied upon a broad scale. Talks about, you know, street right-ofways, lot lines, topography, other features. Zoning district boundaries should follow rear lot lines or alley to preserve the cohesiveness of the streetscape and compatibility of adjacent uses. You know, I think that thinking about things that are maybe, you know, designations that are urban residential but primarily a single-family neighborhood that, you know, could be facing some type of rezone or infill development. So I, I took a first crack at this and I just put this together today, so we may tweak it a little bit. But I stated that consideration shall be given to the preservation of the character of the existing neighborhood when deciding upon specific zoning classifications. Since there is some amount of inherent overlap with the descriptions of the land use designations, consideration shall be given to zoning classifications that permit development that is consistent with the scale, development pattern and uses within the surrounding area. So, you know, just trying to prevent an issue in the future where there's a rezone that maybe meets the comp plan but doesn't fit in with the area and usually you have.
I think it's a real concern.
You know, relevant criteria that addresses that as well. But I think that we need, you know, in lieu of that neighborhood conservation designation that's going away, I think that instead of repeating this in each of the different descriptions for the land use designations, we thought we'd put it at the very beginning here just to cover, you know, if we have some, there's inherent overlap within all these designations to a certain extent. And so, you know, just put it here to, to think about covering, you know, all of them. And I think that's all I have. So I, it'd be helpful, we're, like I said, we're still going through and tweaking a few things here or there. But if you just want to look at some of the changes that we made, there was like on the east side of Washington Street, hard to see. Maybe see it a little bit better on the map. There's, you know, this pink designation is suburban commercial and that really is the neighborhood business, you know, zone is what that points to. And that's more of, you know, the Harvest Hills neighborhood designation where you have, it's, it's meant to serve limited residential neighborhoods, not meant to serve the entire community. It's just supposed to be kind of a. It's just supposed to be kind of a spot commercial zone that allows some commercial activity that fits in with the neighborhood. And so, we had this designation on the east side of Washington, so like late to Federal Credit Union and then a lot of those professional offices. There's the counseling centers, you know, all the way up the east side there. You can kinda see the pink. So if you look at Washington Street, there's the pink on all, you know, pretty much the east side of that. You know, I don't know that that is really meant to be more of a neighborhood business. I mean, it's directly adjacent to the city core and the commercial, you know, central business district. So I had changed those in the proposed revision to urban mixed, which is Legacy Crossing and, you know, the whole area between downtown and the university essentially. And, you know, it's meant to be this kinda transitional zone which allows commercial and residential, which is what we have in that, on that strip on the east side. So I had made some changes there. But you can pretty much go back and forth and see some of the changes that were made. Not a whole lot, it's mainly just, you know, assigning those residential designations to the areas that were neighborhood conservation. So if you just want mine, you know, on your spare time looking through this and if anybody has any trouble, I mean, it's pretty small, so if I can print it out in, you know, larger versions and you can take that home and really get into it, whatever you prefer. But we'll continue to tweak a few things here and look at it and then bring it back again next time and you can answer questions and pretty much do whatever you wanna do.
Mike, the brown on the northeast corner, is that just north of Good Sam? Is that, yeah, that. These are the Good Sam apartments?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I guess I have difficulty viewing them as urban.
Well, it's not framed within the grid or this block system and it doesn't have alley access and it's kind of a, it's almost like a planned unit development in a sense. It's-
It's just kinda sitting out there.
Yeah, it doesn't have the proximity to the core of town that-
You could almost put a label of gray or color it gray, but-
Well, you know, it just kinda just one example is of the traditional, you know, alley-loaded neighborhoods, you know, looking at kinda these other descriptors. You know, it's not in close proximity to the city core. It's not close to commercial development. It is adjacent to an arterial, you know, I mean, that's pretty much-
It's just got the density that you're looking for but nothing else in terms of character.
Exactly.
So then it gets to be harder to defend the character inside the grid if you're trying to preserve it, you know, so.
And maybe, you know, I think that, those are a little tough. I mean, I can see, you know, out on White Avenue where we have a lot of PUDs and apartments. I think that makes sense, but-
I'm not sure I like the brown up there.
Okay. Well, we can, we can think about what to do with that. Maybe it's adding some further description to, you know, these designations that kind of addresses some of these larger institutional types of uses. Or maybe we just call it auto-urban residential and-
It's almost multifamily communities, you know, of, I don't know what you have with the auto-
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's similar. I mean, you have, you know, Good Sam that went through a PUD down on Fairview that, like Walter said, has the, you know, multifamily, has the twin homes with it. Similar, not, you know, maybe a little bit smaller scale than this, you know. But this is R2, so they went through a PUD to do that. You know, this Good Sam up here is, it's R4, so they just did it by right, you know. So you still have almost the same thing, but one's auto-urban residential and one's urban residential just 'cause of the zone, even though they're the same thing. So, yeah, I'll, we, let me think about that one. We'll talk about that next time. Some of the other things that caught my attention, I mean, we had Brant's Tow Yard over here on the north end of town that was designated as suburban commercial, which is the neighborhood business zone. I don't know why, you know, it's on the highway corridor. You have all the other commercial there to the east off of Rodeo and 95. And so I, you know, ended up changing that one. We had some industrial zone actually on the east side of Allman Street. Actually, Jim Robinson's business complex there, portion of that was in the industrial zone. And so, and some of the storage units on the east side as well. So it was almost pretty much all developed out, but it, you know, wasn't really developed as industrial uses. And so I changed that to the auto-urban commercial, similar to the rest of the corridor. That was a change. We'll probably look at the southeast area a little bit more too. You know, this is, we've done the southeast Moscow Industrial Park master plan since this was, you know, the 2009 comp plan was adopted. So we can take a look at what that looks like and see how it fits. I mean, we have this portion that kinda stands out to me that's business park that kinda points to Altourist-style business park. And it doesn't really, you know, follow, doesn't look like it appears to follow any kinda rhyme or reason as to where it's located. So we'll probably take a look at this area as well as part of this. But this is already, you know, designated as industrial and maybe that's just, maybe that's fine and maybe we just do this auto-urban commercial. But that'll probably be tweaked a little bit as well. But for the most part, I think that that's about all the changes. We, you know, same thing, grapple a little bit over here in the A Street, C Street area with urban residential. You know, I don't have a close-up map of this, but it's, you know, still kinda that pattern of, you know-
It's kinda pre-World War II development, yeah.
And so, you know, went with auto-urban residential and kinda as you transition into some of the larger lots that are up on the top of C Street and I ended up transitioning that into more of an auto-urban residential. There's numerous rancher styles that, as you end up going further west, had done that. But, yeah, take a look at it in more detail and come next time with any questions and we can go through it and-
So I guess what I'm wondering is where you have the pre-World War II neighborhoods, which are, you know, north and south of Sixth Street and certainly West Sea area would qualify and they tend to have small parcels, gridded, you know, streets, smaller blocks. And then in the same zone, and we have that paragraph you put in trying to, you know, retain the spirit of conserving those neighborhoods. But then we include all these big apartment complexes in the same land use and that bothers me because it's all post-World War II totally. You got, people have cars and drive everywhere and there's no sidewalks kind of development. And so, I have a problem with those all being in the same color, so that's-
Well, um-
And I don't know if that does what you just did, but, I mean, you know, in terms of the neighborhood conservation or whatever.
And maybe-
I mean, I could see all of the ones that we're talking about potentially someday becoming historic districts, like the West Sea and south of, south of Sixth and, or, yeah, or south of Third, I'm sorry. Third to, you know, the highway. They have that capacity and those other areas don't at all. I mean, they're just purely post-World War II, very, actually fairly recent development in most cases. And so lumping them all together just because they're, they've got a certain density is kind of disappointing to me.
Okay. Well, I guess that, you know, I guess the question would be is if there's enough concern about, you know, something negative happening with those being bungled like that and-
I have a concern about it, yeah.
I mean, you can think about, you know, those areas. You know, I think that the, kinda the prime example that I've given is just more of a rezone that could happen within those areas. And, you know, I think about in my neighborhood, I think Maybelle down to Harold. You have a really large lot that for some reason had never been developed and it's in an R2 zone. It'd be, I think, encompassed by urban residential, you know. And I guess that if they wanted to rezone it, it'd be more of a spot zone because it'd be right in this small piece right in the middle. But, you know, if they platted it, it'd be pretty much perfectly four symmetrical lots that are almost the exact same size as everything in the surrounding area. But you could, you know, somebody could make a run at, you know, maybe changing the zone to allow a higher density. So I guess it's, you know, the question would be whether or not we have enough concern to maybe create another designation for more apartment-type development.
I wonder if we could look at somebody else's map. It does, it is a bit strange that the- Jim's, the auto park, I mean, the thing over on Allman where all the trailer houses and/or manufactured homes are is shown in the same color as his, of the historic Moscow. It seems something isn't quite right about that. And I don't know what the immediate solution is. But if somebody's just looking at the map and thinking there's some similarity, there's no similarity at all. Not that there's anything wrong with the, that's probably the best trailer house, manufactured home development that in the whole region. And it's one that I think one would, you can certainly say complimentary things about it often. But it's not in any way, not only isn't it like Fort Russell, it's not like over on Kenneth Street or on Logan or Lynn. There's something, yeah, there's something, it's telling people a little bit of an odd story. I hear what Wendy's saying. I'd be curious, I don't know if I could look at, whether I know Boise well enough in its development patterns to think of what they're calling, how you-
Hyde Park maybe?
Well, Boise, Boise's got its north end and east end. And then what happens when you go to a similar kind of development? How do you express that in a way that, I don't know what would happen to- You wonder if that trailer park, what's its longevity like? Could, in another 30 years, could somebody just, you know, trash the whole thing and redevelop it in an entirely different way? I don't, I don't know. I know I used to, I used to decry the trailer house living all across Idaho. And one of the things that, one of my friends from Seattle used to say to me and it changed my mental condition was, you know, those trailer houses live light on the land. They don't have basements, they don't have big stone walls. You can change those. I mean, it's not the end of the world. Somebody's living, whether they're living out in Deere or in St. Mary's or in downtown Moscow, those are fairly somewhat temporary, even though we've been now seeing it for, what, 40 years at least. A couple of my old professors actually moved over there. You know, if you want to have a less expensive retirement, it's a great, it's a great choice. So anyway, I'm thinking with Wendy that it would be ideal, I think, to have, try and find another, another quality, another little box that might give it a slightly different-
Well, these large, and also just all these large parcel apartment building complexes are not a similar pattern of development period.
There's nothing yet about them that's similar. So it would seem like worth looking. Let's see if we can find maybe just another little detail that would change that color. You know, only a few people look at these things anyway, but it is, it's pretty significant. It's a big, the trailer park over there is really a big hunk of land and it's, and I've come to really think highly of it, but I don't compare it to-
It's well done.
The old section of town.
You just don't want it the same color as your lot.
Even though I'm, you know, I'm the last guy that has an alley. I'm almost the last alley past Hayes. Past Hayes, there aren't many alleys, but we've got one and I love that alley. It's really, in fact, I'd like to change the, you know, anytime, if you could get an alley developed to a little higher level, we should give people the honor of calling it an alleyne or a muse instead of an alley because alley has that sensibility of, oh, well, it's dirty and people don't take care of it. But one of the things about our particular alley is that there's a few places where you can walk down the alley and actually see something beside trash cans. And so it's a kind of a good thing. Let's consider it. I'll try and do a little research too and think if we could find another, another way.
Well, I mean, it just seems like urban residential, we have so many things underneath this umbrella of just this one designation that I think that that's part of what, you know, going through this, we've been struggling with is you have the older grid pattern, alley-loaded neighborhoods.
Traditional neighborhood and then the others are not traditional because they're post-World War II. You know, it's, I don't know, that's just one idea, but-
Or either, yeah, I mean, it- Okay, well-
And it didn't make sense, I think, in this regard, as you've changed the color of the university zone
Yeah, I like that.
To differentiate it from other civic places. I think it's enough of a statement, but I think it was a really good thing to do.
Yeah, no, I think that was a great idea, yeah.
Well, I'll, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that and look at what others, some other communities have. And I think that, yeah, there's enough in there, you know, since it covers so many different things, multifamily, you know, areas out on White Avenue, areas A and Baker that are so different in context than kinda these core areas and mobile home parks that I think it probably warranted another designation and that would probably be the good solution to do.
Well, it looks like a lot of it, in my defense, I-
You use the word sensibility in your opening. Come on, that's where I picked up on it.
I have R2, right across the street is our, across my alley is R4. I live with R4 probably closer than anybody here. Are you, are you R4?
I'm in R4.
So we have something in common. Every day, I, all I have to do is walk 20 feet and I'm in an R4. Every day, I, all I have to do is walk 20 feet and I'm in an R4 zone. Actually, there are, there's some R4 in Fort Russell.
Absolutely, there's some, that were built as apartments and-
And one of the intriguing things about Moscow is that because we've been relatively poor and because we've, and I don't mean poor in, I just mean that we haven't had glowing pockets of money, so that we don't see fancy things tearing apart our, the neighborhoods. Neighborhoods have a tendency to kind of stay the same. And you can't say that about Spokane, as you look around in some of their old developments, Brown's Edition specifically, you know, there's just exotic five-story apartments across from houses and because there was money there to do it. And we haven't had that. And for many of those reasons, Moscow, that's part of the reason, I think, that the Fort Russell district is rather significant because we don't find, even though R4 stuff isn't dramatically terrible, you know, it's not like a great deviation. I think it's worth looking for a new little colored box. It couldn't hurt us too much. Let's see if we can find it.
Do a lot of these urban areas exceed that 15 units per acre? I mean, it looks like off White.
Yeah, I mean, probably a lot on, you know, not necessarily some of the PUDs like Tambo and Camden and Folkstone out there, but the apartments certainly do, you know. And that's a good point because, you know, we only say, you know, five to 15. There's really nothing that points to anything above that, you know, there'd be more of a, you know, multifamily designation which goes up to 24 units or, you know, what we typically see them max out as. So I, you know, I think that that, that's a good point as well.
Filter for the next, for a different designation, yeah.
Yeah, we have just like this two zones that pretty much cover all residential in the, in the city. And I think that that, you know, probably would warrant another one to have maybe three tiers instead, so.
Okay. So are, what are we on? Are we on use table ordinance? Was this part of the use table ordinance or was this part of the comp plan?
No, this is still comp plan.
Okay.
Use table ordinance, I don't have anything for you. I just wanted to give you an update that all, you know, all the different things we've been working on, the sign code amendment, the parking, you know, I think the last one was the off-street parking table. All that's over in legal being put into ordinance form, so we should have everything in ordinance to move forward with, hopefully in the next meeting or two. So that's going forward.
Votes and-
Shared reading, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, okay. So, would we like to discuss the shared reading? I, it was long enough that I didn't print it out, I just put it on my computer, so I'm gonna pull it out. And basically, another economic profile.
Yeah.
It was interesting, yeah.
I mean, I thought it was interesting in that, that some of the two things that it points to, kind of, higher-end luxury apartments and healthcare-
Yeah.
-are the two things that it just are in the process of being built and, you know, Grievance Medical Office Building was built-
And then you're considering identity to be the other one or what?
Identity for more higher-end luxury, you know, apartments in that area.
Yeah, it seemed like there weren't a lot of development niche opportunities when you read that report, other than-
Well, and there, yeah, restaurants and retail are kind of saturated, you know.
Yeah, well, they keep appearing. And so it'll be interesting to see which ones are still around in five years, but certainly still on the upswing in terms of new ones forming.
I think it has to do with the, our beautiful restaurants has to do with young people who love food. And, and I can't believe that they're making money, but there they are. I mean, it's really shocking and, and I keep just adoring all those young people who, who are so in love with, with food that they provide us with a great selection. It's amazing.
Well, given what's happened to our commercial, exit of Macy's and sort of the ascendancy of online retailing and so on, I, I'm inclined to think that retail prospects are not great. I'm sort of curious how the apartments that are being constructed down on the old railway line are-
You're talking about identity?
-going to affect the calculus of, of need for residential units. We're about to get a whole lot more.
We're getting, that company, you know, is doing the block over in Pullman too, so we're gonna get a major dose of California thought in-
Well, what's interesting, yeah, you're right. I mean, what's interesting to me, though, is that the U of I isn't growing. And so the demand for apartments isn't really growing. It's replacing this apartment building that's newer and nicer with that one that's not.
Seems like that.
So how much of that?
Well, it also points to, you know, baby boomers and some younger professionals as kind of that market that don't get attracted to apartments because there isn't, you know, kind of that luxury option.
Because they said only a need for six, eight, was it a six a year or something? It's not a lot of development. I mean, but, yeah, you can see people, I mean, I, I know people who are maybe slightly older than I am who've sold their houses and they just have, have something in the Ambassador so they can travel more. Or people buy condos in Spokane so they can be near an airport and just, you know, be able to travel more and not have to worry about it. So there may be, we may be seeing more of that than this report would indicate. I don't know, but it's-
Well, the national averages are indicating that, you know. I don't know how much of that's translated to us, but, you know, you see the new census and you see a lot more, you know, migration to the inner cities for people that are 50 years and over.
But then the question that, that was raised in this as it relates to Legacy Crossing is, do those people want to be proximal to a bunch of students? And probably not. I mean, you see the conflicts in Pullman and College Hill when people try to live up there who are not students in it, you know, it's, it's, it, there's always been sort of a stigma of, of being overwhelmed by, being surrounded by students. So, you know, for people who aren't students and are, I don't want to say adults, but probably aging adults or whatever. So, so as it pertains to Legacy Crossing, because it's so close to campus, it's hard to know what, what that will end up being. I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, I'm-
With the interest shown tonight over the number of students, number of employees moving about and all of that, would you want Mike to send out to members of the PMZ that last Peterson report?
Absolutely.
It's got a lot of that data in there.
Oh, great. Yeah, that'd be good.
And you've got it, Mike?
I don't, but I, I'm sure I can get a copy out. You have it?
I have it.
Okay.
Walter, before you leave, do you have any insights?
I can scan it.
Okay.
I know you're an economic development guy. Do you have any words of wisdom based on this report that was put together by, you have it, Dr. Furman, Oregon, right?
Johnson, next.
Johnson, yeah.
No, uh.
Okay. I was just, I don't know.
See, see if you've got it. And if you don't, let me know when I'll give you, I'll scan you mine.
Okay.
It's just got a lot of things, Nels and some of the other people asking.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, thanks, Walter. Yeah, I, I, I think we're in trouble if we can't see the university grow. I would dream that maybe the university could somehow just precede the city a little bit. And as we're growing at 1%, it would really be in, nice to see the university, if the university could grow at something like, close to 2% a year, that would just, that would, if, if it doesn't, then I think Legacy Crossing is in serious trouble. Personally, I, I mean, I've, as we worked on, I've worked on it probably more than any buddy that I know. I've used it in classroom stuff and what have you, and it's just, it, it seems to me that it's the natural place for the university and the city to grow together. And, and of course, the medical people are starting to, we see on the edge of it some things that are really exciting. And on the other hand, when we see the figure of the university not, especially our current president, that's what, he came on board with his, that's what we're gonna do, is make this, that place grow, and we're not seeing it yet. And I don't know what the, I don't know what the solution is.
That's been the mandate on the last three presidents since White, you know, at least since Hoover left.
Right.
Because Hoover was trying to grow in Boise and everybody else has been trying to grow here.
Well, and that's happening inch by inch. I, I see other programs that I think are gonna move to Boise too, so that's a dilemma, is a dilemma for us. And it's just intriguing to me that Washington State, I mean, you could see why Western and University of Washington and whatever schools on the, on the other side would grow, you can see that. But how Washington State has managed to just leap forward in the last decade and-
Deficit spending. Deficit spending.
Well, it may be, it may be, although that, I don't know if that attracts students or what. I'm just a little confounded. I realize they build tons of big new buildings, but you just wonder what, why it is that, and I don't know what the state's growth figure is. I haven't looked at it just recently. I mean, we know of the Boise Valley, you know, I, it will probably be a million before I die if I can hang on for another four or five years. It's, it continues to, to grow. And you'd think with, we have some possibility of, I suppose, relating to Coeur d'Alene, but for some reason, we, we can't do what Washington, we, we need a little cougar dose, don't we? Somebody needs to go over there and hold hands with somebody and figure out how they, because they're, they continue to attract people from the other, people are willing to drive 300 miles through bleak, on a bleak road to get to, to Pullman. And, and in my mind, our 300-mile drive, it isn't as fast. It's more beautiful from Boise to here, but they don't, people don't drive on that one quite as much as they do on 26. I don't know what that is. Anyway, I, in my mind, that deviates from the reading, but it, it just seems like Legacy Crossing-
It's pretty central to it, I think.
Legacy Crossing is, if, if the university doesn't grow, I just think Legacy Crossing will be something different.
Well, we're bombarded by a couple of conditions. I mean, the hospital growth has been helpful in terms of-
Sure.
For sure. But the, you know, the change in retail patterns to online and the death of, or the dying mall sort of circumstances nationwide is worse, certainly seeing-
We need to attract some industry to Moscow. I mean, that's, could be the offsetting factor if the university doesn't grow.
Yeah.
And of course, Pullman has had that luxury of having, Schweitzer, Ed has changed the face of the city in many, in quite remarkable ways. I mean, you can't even imagine why, it's hard to imagine why he stayed in Pullman, but here, here it is. And it's, so it's quite an exciting thing for the region. And I, it's my view that Schweitzer probably almost single-handedly is in hands, is the reason for the airport.
Actually, he has his own fleet of planes.
I know he does.
Yeah.
But he just wants to, whatever plane he wants, he needs, in other words, what Ed wants is a good airport-
Right, right.
-that he can land on, because he uses that plane probably weekly, daily.
Yeah. So, so we're kind of squeezed on the retail corner and we need student growth that echoes into every, other dimensions of the economy, all across every trade really, or every profession or trade.
And we have had a fair amount of growth in numbers of rental units in the last couple of years.
Yeah. We have, yeah, yeah. So, it seemed, I, I got a little depressed reading it because it was like, you know, you rob Peter to pay Paul, you build something new and it takes away the viability. And I worry about, like, I've always worried about Legacy Crossing, honestly, in terms of its impact on, potential impact on downtown, if it has too much commercial woven into it, that, that I, to me, it seems like a really prime location for student living, in particular with some, you know, community-
It just seems to me that the university doesn't have more than five or six identified places for buildings. And so really-
But they built all those dorms like, what, 10 years ago? That, you know, all those apartments all along Sixth Street, they really increased the capacity of what the university can run out at the expense of sort of private landlords throughout town, so.
At least in my view, Legacy Crossing doesn't have to be urban. It seems to me that if the university grows, and let's say in the next decade they build five or six buildings, they should, they could all be in Legacy Crossing.
That would be great. Yeah, I, I agree with you. I think it's a normal, a natural expansion place, yeah.
My positive view of, is, is that the hospital, other buildings, and as people decide they are willing to do a more urban kind of situation. And, and so I've probably got my head in the sand about whether it competes with downtown. I, I don't, I don't see, I tried to tell myself it wouldn't be that competitive, but that presumes that the university is, and I don't have any reason to think that the last, neither of the last two presidents even know where Legacy Crossing is. I, I don't think. That's my opinion.
Well, when they mentioned in here the idea of the bookstore, a new books, you know, that-
Right.
-that bookstore that was built when you and I started on the faculty, I mean, it was built, it's pretty ar, okay? But you see that that whole space has not turned into selling books, it's turned into selling vandal items. I mean, bookstores aren't even the same anymore for universities. So, is there a demand for it? I don't know. But I agree with you, the, the campus is pretty hemmed in on the state line side, so it really, the direction it can grow is towards downtown and maybe some of that-
Well, we may. I, because what I've thought is that Homestead told us a hundred years ago, move toward town.
Yeah.
You know, that's the way all civilized people do.
We went the other way.
Well, and we went the other way. And so, duh. But we've run up against the state line and this is an opportunity, but whether-
Well, I would love to see some kind of performance facility or basketball facility or something on that. I would have loved to seen the hockey rink there instead of out at the fairgrounds. So it's in between town and gown and, you know, shared by the university.
Right, right, I think there's an opportunity.
But that's just me. I mean, I know the, the people working on that would probably not want to hear that, so. But it's, you know, and I have students looking to those kinds of possibilities as well, so it's-
We need a, the Gropp Symphony Hall.
Yeah, 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 right, 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 yeah.
There's an opportunity for you to- There's an opportunity for you.
Well, the music school has needed a venue for a long time for the Jazz Fest and everything else. It's not just a kibbie dome made into a makeshift kind of performance space, so. But, but I don't know. I mean, you know, it, it definitely presents challenges for, we, we need an economic stimulus to be able to have Legacy Crossing really.
On the other hand, the, given the fact that the university hasn't grown and, or has even receded, it's pretty shocking that our downtown is as dramatically interesting as it is.
I think that represents a cultural shift all of a sudden.
I think it, I think.
Don't you? I mean, I, I remember hearing Bill Ball in the app say it maybe eight years ago that downtown was going to evolve into an entertainment district, and it really has. It's not a retail, it's a tough climate for retail. I was surprised they were as positive as they were about it. But it certainly is, is an entertainment district, for sure. So, yeah, that's, I don't know.
Well, and gets, as, as Joel was noting, if, if Spokane can't, if Spokane and Boise can't keep a Macy's in downtown, we're in, we're in, we're in a serious change world.
Yeah.
I mean, both, both Boise and Spokane lost their, lost Macy's. It's pretty shocking. So, we're, it's a sea change and we have to look into our own hearts and see where we buy stuff, you know? I, I'd like to say, I'd, I'd like to act like I don't buy from Amazon, but I do. And, you know, because hell, they can get it to me faster than I can drive across town. I mean, it's just shocking. I, I just bought some special tape or some building product or, you know, you, you try to, you, you want some ski, you want a bag to put your skis in. There's no place. You can't even find, you, you'd have, you have to drive to McCall to buy a ski bag. And, and so you just get online and one touch and three days later, a ski bag shows up at your front door. That's pretty shocking.
Well, we have a cultural change that way.
But it, you know, because we've made fun of Walmart and said, well, I don't shop at Walmart. But now, it's pretty, it's pretty, you know, and you go to, you want to buy a book and you go to the bookstore and, and I try to do this as often as possible, but you wait for three weeks to get it at the bookstore. And, and if you order it from Amazon, three days, three days, you've already read the book. It, it came two days, it came in two days to your, to your door. That's pretty amazing.
So, what does this all mean for Legacy Crossing? That's the big question.
It's not a, you know, it's so business. Our lives are changing before our very eyes and we, we, I, I suppose little towns like Moscow don't have anything to say about it, do we? Really? Portland and Seattle still are big gorillas, you know, they can, they can still have Macy's.
Well, they've been, yeah, growing, for sure. But their regional area has.
And, and like, and like, we were just talking about, the young people seem with vigor, who make money, want to live in Portland and Seattle. Well, anyway, I, I suspect that we're going to be just like we've been in the last 100 years, a day late and a dollar short. That's Moscow. We, we, you know, every, the whole story of the University of Idaho is, oh my God, we don't have any money. We can't, we can't do it.
I mean, we should get Amazon to locate here, you know? And you are, of course, maybe.
Some of the dead, yeah.
Yeah, right.
So, I'm curious. I, I noticed some things in there about the aging population. You touched on it briefly before you went back off onto the university. And, and, you know, I went to two, I went to Carol Travis's talk this week. And I went to the Nita Hill talk and there's a awful lot of white-haired people in the audience, you know? And one of the things in the article was that, you know, the, the retired population wants to be near a university and take in on the events. And it touched upon having a growing senior population here. And you have the growing medical industry here. So, on that, I don't hear, I always hear the conversation on the university. But, and I don't know how to judge it, but what about the conversation?
Well, I, I agree with you. I think it's, you know, there'll be, it, it seems like there's, it's an attractive place for people to retire because it's affordable relative to other, certainly real estate-wise, people cashing out of wherever they've been or, I mean, I think there are certainly a lot of community amenities, but I don't see Legacy Crossing as being the destination.
Well, no.
Oh, you think, could be a, could be a dwellings there, though? Couldn't there be higher-end apartments? At least when we did the project and we looked at it and with the student work, BJ Swanson and I were duking it, trying to say, no, that's my apartment right there, you know? That's where I would live. It'd take something like that, something lovely at, at Legacy Crossing to get me out of my house. Otherwise, I'm just going to die right there on my new porch. Just gonna, one day I'll just be hanging over the edge.
Yeah, I remember when my students worked on it, I think two different times, and they did.
Michael.
Row houses along the creek and, you know, small, when people want to sort of downsize and, and have that amenity. You know, and it's a big enough, it's just, I hate to say segregated housing, but I don't think most retired people want to be right in the middle. It's undergraduates or even graduate students.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, it's a different pulse.
They don't want to.
So, you have to figure, you know, it would, I, who knows? Whoever would take that on would be taking a risk in developing it. But, yeah, maybe, maybe it would work.
Well, what about not Legacy Crossing?
Oh, I agree with you, community-wide, yeah, absolutely. And maybe it's a big enough parcel that there's ways to do it, but I think it needs a master plan instead of, you know.
Well, I'm the guy that probably lives closer to more students than anybody in the room because of that artwork.
No, you're not.
You do.
Yeah.
So, again, another commonality, because I look across the alley and they're all students right there. And they were walking, the, the thing that messes my life up is not the fact that they're students. It's during the winter, they go to school before I get up to do, to, to clear my sidewalk. And by the time I get up, they've already packed it down. And that's the worst thing I can say about my, for the students who live in my neighborhood.
Well, that's pretty good then. But you're in your own single-family house, you're not in an apartment.
Sure, sure. But I wouldn't suggest that people in, in Legacy Crossing would live in the same dwelling as the students. There'd be student dwellings and there would be two.
No, I mean, it could have an appeal. I, my class one time, Shelley Bennett had us actually work on it, this was probably 10 or more years ago, maybe even more, on the identity site.
No, I, I remember.
And she, she had this idea that it would be a great retirement development there. And, you know, because it's close to campus, but it could be sort of encapsulated with its own amenities in terms of. And so, I, yeah, I mean, that, there, I think that there's that opportunity. It's just who's going to take the risk to do it?
Because what we need is retirement dwelling, in apartment dwellings that aren't Seattle-priced, that are, you know.
Well, that have some kind of community amenities, so you have exercise rooms and things that people want.
At least, at least, and I don't speak for a lot of professors, I suppose, but I would love to live in Legacy Crossing so that I could walk to that lecture that we had the other night. And I could also just walk two blocks to have dinner and have two glasses of wine and not worry about driving home.
We, we do all of those things from where we live.
And so, we.
But, yeah, but I, I hear you.
So, I think there's a, I think there's a, I think it could happen.
Yeah. What, what's the turn, Turnstone? No, what am I thinking of? The white brick building that became gray that on Third.
Turnstone Flat.
Yeah, Turnstone Flat. So, I mean, that's an example of kind of what you're talking about. It's an eclectic sort of opportunity.
Well, it's a little bit, until, I mean, Legacy Crossing needs Kreitz to have a brilliant idea. And, you know, that, once Kreitz moves out of the site, there's a lot of potential things that could happen, but it's a little tricky. And, and they don't seem to be moving rapidly. But that's, that's the other thing that's playing down for us, you know? Forty, 50 years ago, harvest time was, there was a lot of wheat dust and, and stuff banging around. People were moving wheat in, in this area. And now it's gone, entirely gone. And it goes to Lewiston and, so we never see it. It just, the trucks don't even know where Moscow is. So, we're really not an agricultural town anymore, I don't think. Wouldn't you agree?
We definitely don't see the, the trucks and the traffic for ag, but I think our economy is very.
Well, it's based on people that are in the area, in the region, sure. But I mean, we, what, nothing's happening in agriculture, it's happening in our town anymore. And.
Not any processing or.
Though Kreitz is the only one, really.
Yeah.
And they want to move just as soon as they, they would move to Efreda, is, is the sense I have, that they would love to, that their big action is over in central Washington more than it is here. But it would take some money to, somebody needs to make them an offer.
Any other thoughts on the, on the article? You know, the, so this was 2014 and it seems like some things have even changed since.
Yeah.
Some trends have, you know, gone quite the way they predicted, but it was, it was very interesting to read, I thought, so.
Yeah.
Well, oh, I have, so as the next, I, I sent this to Mike. I, I'm, this is the time of year I have to do continuing ed classes online for my architectural license. And I, right now, I'm, I'm taking a course that, all these courses are accessible to anybody. When you pay the money for them is when you need the credit and you take the test. And so, but it's, it's kind of a cool, the one I'm taking right now, and I'll have more to say about it next time on whether it's a good shared reading. I sent it to you today. But designing walkable urban thoroughfares and a context-sensitive approach. And they redefine arterial and collector streets as urban thoroughfares. And it, it, it's a whole, it talks about a process of balancing across all of the users of a street rather than just cars. And it's, I, you know, I haven't gotten into it super far yet, but I thought it was pretty pertinent to, you know, what we've been worrying about. So, anyway.
It is good. I, I liked it, I thought. I, I think that's.
And so, rethinking, instead of collector and arterial, they're thoroughfares essentially, but they're complete in their, and so anyhow, yeah, I'll see what you think about it, Mike. And I can send it, you know, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be intrigued to.
It would take a few, it's 158 pages. It's not, it's not short, but. They don't let you get those credit, continue to get credit for nothing, yeah.
It sounds good, because that's what I think should happen to our, I clearly didn't agree with the arterial word, but as a, as a bridge gets built, we can stop talking about connectivity and get Joel off our back here. Because he's going to stop, he can stop using the word. Once he gets connected, we'll see if he drives across a bridge five times a day or not. But what I'd like to do is think of, of Sixth and Third and D as, as that word that you're.
Well, and it, it talks about a process of trying to balance the interests of all the users of the streets. And so, yeah, and before it's too late, you know, but because we're just, you know, looking at that change, so.
I, and, and I guess that's all the more reason, in my mind, of, Michael, to try and give more than just lip service to the central historic district of our city and try to make it seem like different than the.
Well, I just wonder if it should be traditional urban residential and then contemporary urban residential, something almost like that. One's a contemporary pattern, one's a traditional pattern. You know, and, and it starts to sort of sort out the, the character and style differences without just basing it only on density. I don't know. But there's probably a better title.
It'd be interesting to see where our, as we get, just lost the word. Our, our, our little, plan to have little units, you know, small units.
Oh, small, oh, yeah.
Accessory dwelling things. It'd be interesting to see where those start, if, if there was a more, if they, where do they show up the most? It seems like they're liable to show up in the center section of town where there are alleys and, but different kinds of access.
Have we seen any more? Any proposed?
We've only had a few, right, so far?
Yeah, we haven't seen any more since I think I last reported on it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I thought there'd be a bigger.
Yeah.
Kind of need than there seemed to have been. But, but then there's also, we're talking about the tiny dwellings too. And that's another issue in itself.
I want to know the addresses of where they have been? The addresses of the four that have been done? North Adams, South Adams, Victoria and Pintail.
Oh, interesting.
Adams, huh? And what, what was the third one?
Victoria.
Oh.
Great. So, are we ready to adjourn? Or do we have anything more brilliant to say about Legacy Crossing? Okay, we'll see you next time.